All right. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, Noli. Thank you, Raul, Council District 7 today. And just off the top, the ground rules such as they are, no opening statements this time around, but we'll give you two minutes for a close at the end. If you see us looking down, we're looking at our notes, or we might be fact checking you in real time. It's one of the beauties of Zoom. And I'll be answering, asking some of the questions to get us started. The board kind of agreed to those. And so, in the interest of brevity, we'll just jump right into it. First question, obviously, a lot has changed, right, since, since March, since we last talked to you. A big part of that is the pandemic. And I'm wondering how that has affected your views on housing and transportation and transit, particularly. And Noli, why don't we start with you?
Well, yeah, it's obviously had an effect on everybody, but it's, you know, serving on all these different boards I've served on, including the Mobility Board. And it's really changed how we view transit. You see ridership going down. Unfortunately, we've been planning, the city's been planning to hopefully get people to use and increase the transit numbers, the ridership in transit. But we've seen a lot of empty buses, and people are afraid to take transit. So we got to, you know, that's, I think that should force us to take a step back and review our long-term planning for transit. And also, we've also seen, you know, more people wanting to live outside of the city because of these. And so, we have to look at where the city is trying to pack more of our residents into, into the city and close to mobility hubs and so more transit-oriented development, which I still support, but people are more willing to move out into the suburbs, to single-family homes. And I know there's cities, there's been a push to eliminate single, single-family homes. So we have to look at how the pandemic has changed the mentality of our residents and adjust accordingly. This could be a long-term pandemic we're dealing with, and make sure we plan accordingly, and how it affects people's views on where they, how they, where they want to live, and how they want to commute and travel around the city.
Before I turn to Raul, the five big moves from Sandag, very quickly, do you support those? And how does your view on that change since the pandemic?
I don't support the five big moves. It's mostly because of the price tag. It's $177 billion, which is, which if you break it down, 177 billion divided by 3.3 million people, that's like $50,000 to $60,000 for every single man, woman, and child in the city of San Diego. It is not the best way to be stewards of how we spend our transit dollars. We need to look forward and think about how we're going to get around the city. And it's, you know, whether it be using drone technology or autonomous vehicles, it's, it's, it's going to, we have to plan for the future and look at how we are going to get around. And perhaps, and most likely, people are not going to be getting on trolleys. We're going to be using technology to get around the city more efficiently. And that's probably not going to be, or less likely to be transit, or transit buses and trolleys.
Just 3.3 million is the county's population. I mean, it's dead city, but.
Right. Yeah, 177 billion is for the whole Sandag Plan, which is for the region.
Yeah. Raul, how has the pandemic changed how you look and approach housing and transit?
So part of, part of what I'm seeing that's encouraging is that workers and businesses are really realizing that productivity with working at home is achievable, and they're recognizing that with a stipend, you can put together a home office and reduce the amount of transit time, or reduce the amount of time you're away from your, your family, reduce carbon emissions, and just reduce the rent that a business is spending on their office space, right? So I think that that's a good reason that people are probably staying home and not using buses and trolleys as much. But I really think that we have to remember where the problem was before the COVID, and then where it's going to be in a year and a half after we've moved past it, hopefully. The reason people don't use transit is because it's not as, as efficient, or as cost-worthy of an alternative as driving your car when you need to get somewhere in 20, 25 minutes, and it takes you 45 to 50 minutes on transit. That's not a good option, and people aren't going to rely on it. The other aspect of it is that it's coupled with our homelessness issue, because when I knock on doors in Allied Gardens and in Del Cerro and San Carlos, I say, why don't you drive into Grantville, drop off there, and take the trolley into town? And they say, well, it's not always clean, and I don't feel always safe, because there's a homeless person there. So if we actually fix our homelessness issue, we can re-instill trust in the people who haven't really relied on transit in the first place. That's how we get mode share up. That's how we meet that climate action plan, our legal obligation of the climate action plan, which I'm sure you're going to ask about later, because it's so important. We need to renew it and review it and expand it even. So I think that things will transition back to a normal in a little while. And so, we can't just say, oh, people are now not using transit. Don't, let's not think about it. Moving into the future, I do believe the five big moves is an incredibly revolutionary way of changing our city for a few reasons. It'll connect communities that are often not, it's going to take people in lower-income and working-class communities and get them to their job sites quicker. It's actually going to use a lot of the autonomous vehicles that Noli talked about. If you go step by step with the smart grid, with a faster subway, with a hub that connects several locations with hubs in different regions as well, when you put the fast-track buses and the autonomous vehicles that are all part of it, that's actually going to be part of us investing in stopping climate change down the road, in connecting segregated communities that don't have access to every other part of San Diego. And I think that while it is a big price, and we're always looking for cost savings, we should have done this 30 years ago, 50 years ago, instead of now. It would not have cost $177 billion then. And in 30 years, when we need that plan, it's going to cost, times two, it's going to cost $340 billion. So let's invest now, when borrowing rent, borrowing rates are better, when people need jobs, you know, it's a way for us to increase our base of jobs here. Or we've relied too much on tourism. Let's get back to constructing these. Let's get people trained up and building the next future of transit. I'd support it.
Measure A, both you guys, what's your position on that? And why don't you go first, Raul?
Sure. I support Measure A. San Diego Taxpayers Association's behind it. I know that for a house that's, has a property tax assessment of $600,000, it's roughly $150 more a year to have that. But this, this solving the affordable housing issue, solving the homelessness issue, is going to open up avenues for every other aspect of our city, as I connected it with transit earlier. And, you know, we're going to get into housing issues. I'm sure, I'm sure Chris is ready to talk about $400,000 like he did in the interview in the primary. I'm ready to talk about it again. But this is, this is a way for us to be able to handle some of that problem. And ultimately, it's.
Sorry, go ahead.
You used the word "solve." This solves nothing.
I respectfully disagree. I think that it's part of the solution. It takes many aspects. There's no one simple solution to anything, as we know. But fundamentally, it's part of solving the problem. And ultimately, it's up to the voters, right? Every voter is going to have their say. The city council doesn't get to impose this tax on anybody. It's up to the voters to decide if that's what they want to put their, put their support behind.
Noli?
We're talking about the housing bond, the Affordable Housing Bond for the city? Yeah, I'm against that, because we just look at what happened in Los Angeles. The LA Controller just came out with a number that it costs $531,000 to build each unit, which is a, which is an incredible waste of money, of taxpayer money. And you've only built, I believe, 228 units in four years since that housing, that Triple H Housing Bond in Los Angeles was passed. And it was passed overwhelmingly in the city of Los Angeles. But the LA Controller just, he was so critical of how this money was spent and how much money was wasted because of this same housing bond that was passed in Los Angeles. So we need to learn lessons of what happened in Los Angeles, just 100 miles north of us, and not spend that money for a, there's better ways to build affordable housing. But increasing property taxes on our homeowners and our residents, especially during this pandemic when people are hurting, is not the right solution.
How, let's talk a bit about another issue that's affected us in the last six months or so, since the Memorial Day killing of George Floyd. Racial justice issues have been in this, you know, part of this country's discourse for a long, long time, but have been elevated since then. How in this moment do you view the San Diego Police Department, and particularly its budget? How would you address community calls to cut $100 million out of a police department budget that's a third of our general fund, and the workforce is a third of our city's, city staff? And Noli, why don't you go first?
You know, this, this issue is so ingrained in me, and I'm so passionate about this issue and trying to come up with solutions. And I think that editorial board for, for inviting us to write the op-ed about our views towards funding the police, or possibly defunding the police. And, you know, I'm someone that just tries to come up with solutions and answers. And one thing that I brought forth is an idea of creating the Law Officer Training Corps, which is a new way to recruit the next generation of police officers. We would recruit young adults from the inner cities where police have had problems and issues. Let's give them a college educate, a free college education, a four-year college education to go into law enforcement. And a four, six, six months to nine months is not enough time to train a police officer. But if they get a four-year education and get training and education in classes like ethnic studies, sociology, alternative dispute resolution, psychology classes, all these classes that are so important for police officers to, to learn and to be used, to be able to use on the streets. And during that time when they're in, on college camp, on college, during college, let them act as community service officers and take over the administrative responsibilities that sworn police officers don't necessarily have to do, but they're, but they're tasked to do. So that's the way to pay for their college education. And afterwards, let's return these LLC cadets to their home neighborhoods where they grew up and built the trust and relationships that, that they developed. I've been talking and making sure that, you know, I've gotten feedback on this. And I've talked to three police chiefs, Jerry Sanders, Chief Nizlitz, and Shelley Zimmerman. And I've gotten great feedback on this, on this idea. Former Chief Lee Shelley Zimmerman has actually talked to National University and saying, you know what, let's see if we can implement this, a hybrid system with online and in-person classes. I talked with the president of the University of San Diego, Dr. James Harris, and said, wow, this is an amazing idea, Noli. We, this is, this is one way we can change the system. And I'm just incredibly passionate about it. And I've talked to civil rights leaders, and like Dr. Willie Blair, that said, this is a, this is a great idea, Noli. So the one thing that I'll also do is save on the recruiting, the city spends millions of dollars on recruitment of police officers every single year. And, you know, we kind of just get, just get whatever comes to us when it comes to police officers. Let's, if we offer them a four-year college education, we'll be able to pick and choose who goes into our police force. And that will result in a better representative, and a better trained, and a better educated police officer for, for the future.
What would the budget look like? Would it go up, or down, or stay the same?
It would go down, because we would save the money on administrative, on, on the administrative costs. We'd be able to save that, because the LLC cadets can take on some of those administrative responsibilities. It would also save the millions of dollars on recruitment that we, that the police department currently undertakes in the budget. So I'm looking for it to go down, and have state, federal, and private endowments from the college, from the colleges pay for, pay for this, instead of it falling on the city. So they don't have to be flushed out, but it's a general roadmap, I think, to, to train our next generation of police officers.
Noli, just one quick thing. As, as the parent of three brown children, if they were offered a free education, I'm not so sure that I wouldn't want to put them on the front lines of being a police officer, rather than getting a degree in engineering.
I mean, it's, it's an issue if you want to go into law enforcement. But during those four years, we're not going to put them on the front lines. They're going to be taking, you know, they're obviously working alongside police officers when, when the time, when, at the necessary and appropriate times. But, you know, doing things like taking theft reports that police officers take, but it takes a lot of their time. And filling out those reports are very cumbersome and very time-consuming. When I went on, when I went on writing ones with the police, you'd be amazed how much time they spend on having to go to stores at the mall and filling out theft reports for a few thousand dollars, and sitting in their car and filling out those reports, which are going to take, that takes so much of our police officers' valuable time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Raul, how have you, how have you, what do you think about this?
Yeah.
Thanks to both of you for writing the essays on, on this subject earlier. I appreciate that.
Of course. So first of all, let me just lay out that, you know, Noli has this idea of a law enforcement recruiting corps. This is not his idea. This actually was an idea from the 1994 federal crime bill that created what's called the Police Corps. It lasted for about seven years. It failed, because it requires a lot of extra funding, and people weren't taking advantage of it. And there's no guarantee that the recruits are going to stay in the community where they necessarily go to college. So I don't think this is going to solve the problem of getting people from the community to be in their community, to be police officers. We want to solve that. We need to make sure that people can afford to buy homes in the cities that they live in, like San Diego. That's why 75% of police officers don't live in the city of San Diego. That's a fundamental problem. This does nothing to address that. Second thing is, you know, I've been a prosecutor with the city attorney's office. I've read thousands, and I'm not kidding when I say thousands, of these reports that Noli's talking about. They cannot be written administratively by an intern who's been sitting there. This is evidence of a crime that needs to be collected and needs to be used in an official prosecution. We can't just say, oh, watch my body cam footage, intern, and you write the report for me while I get back out on the beat. First of all, that's not going to increase their capabilities of being, you know, crime solvers. And two, it's just an irresponsible way to handle criminal evidence. I'm, I'm unique in that I don't think there's actually ever been someone who's a prosecutor, at least in, at least in the last several decades, who's been running for city council, can address these things by understanding the criminal justice reform side, together with what the police officers are facing. So that idea isn't original. It's not his, and it actually doesn't work. It's not going to save on administrative costs. So I, and, you know, people may have not realized it's an old idea that didn't work out. So he's talked to people as about a new idea. I'm not, I'm not saying that they don't think it's a good one, but it's not going to work out the way he thinks it is. The second thing is, and let's get back to the general fund. So I don't believe that we should have cut in this previous budget round. It takes a lot of time to decide where those specific cuts need to be. That's why, you know, Georgette, Gomez, and Monica Montgomery didn't vote no on that budget. They voted yes, because they, it was part of a negotiation with the mayor. They got the Office of, you know, Race and Equity out of it, and said, hey, let's look at this when we have a year to put together the next one. And that's the responsible way to go about it. I also think that, you know, when it comes to SDPD and the cutting of their budget, a lot of that money goes towards their, towards their salaries, towards their benefits. And if you remember from my op-ed, I think I was probably the only person to have footnotes in my entire op-ed. Of all the people who did it, I did research, I remember, Matt, I emailed you, because there was a typo because of my footnotes. But we spend 50% less than San Francisco does per capita, and 25% less than LA. SDPD is doing an amazing job on a cheaper budget. So I don't think we should be cutting it. I think what we have to do is reallocate where they're spending their efforts. We shouldn't have them dealing with homelessness issues. We shouldn't have them dealing with drug addiction. Those are medical, mental health issues that require specialized, specialized experts on that. And this LLC idea isn't going to gear up a police officer to all of a sudden be a social worker, a hurt officer, all together wrapped in one. That's not what a police officer is meant to do. So we can spend that money on stopping more domestic violence, or getting rape kits tested on time, or making sure that human trafficking is reduced. These are serious human issues with real victims, and they require funding. Let's make sure the police are solving those and not dealing with social issues.
So what, Noli, I'm going to give you a chance to respond to what Raul said, but.
I'll take the, I'll take, I'll take the expertise over three San Diego police chiefs over, over, over Raul, you know, anytime, and the president of the university. This is something that I came up with, and it needs to be flushed out. These are just general concepts. But this is.
You didn't come up with it. You could Google it.
The need with, I did come up with it. I did come up with Raul. And if he, if, if, it's, it's amazing that three police chiefs have thought this was a very novel, novel idea, and they called me and complimented me on these new and innovative ideas. So I don't know where you get that, Raul, but if three chiefs and a president of a major university have complimented on it, and say this has merit, I'm going to move forward with it, if, and talk to more people about it, and see how we can, it, just because if something is similar was out there, and it didn't work, that's no reason to give up on something like this, because there's no, a better trained and a better educated police officer in the future is something that we all want, and something we can, we can all strive for. So if there's a similar program out there that didn't work, that's no reason to give up on something, because it's, we all want a more representative and a better trained police officer.
If I could have just 10 seconds, this is really taking a local responsibility and pushing it off onto the state or federal government to fund it. So this isn't really something that Noli, or I, or anybody on the city council is going to have any role in truly implementing. It's going to require outside actors. So it's not only an old idea that was already tried, it's actually an idea that is not within our capability of doing. So it's, it's just outside the total scope of it. I'm not disputing that three police chiefs think it's a good idea. What I'm saying is, it's not yours.
Okay. Well, that's more than 10 seconds, so let's move on to other issues. I'm curious, you know, given those two big issues that I just talked about, how you all have been spending your last six months, what have you been doing to be of service in your, in your communities? And Raul, why don't you go first?
Sure. I've just been showing up to work every day. Sometimes I work from home, but I'm often doing video conference hearings on gun violence restraining orders. After the election in March, I was permanently moved over there, because we anticipated that there was going to be a spike in gun violence due to issues of mental health issues, you know, breakdown in the social fabric with, with people losing their jobs, and domestic violence, alcohol abuse, and drug abuse. And sure enough, there was. We saw it doubling from March, in March and February, March and April, over January and February. And so I've just been constantly reading reports about people who are threatening their loved ones or themselves with firearms, and just arguing the cases and hearing every morning and preparing every afternoon. You know, it's, I'm really proud to be on that team. We hold ourselves to a very high level. You know, we make sure that we use that law according to the standard of evidence, which is clear and convincing. We dismiss a lot of cases. We get referrals on issues that aren't, don't deserve a gun violence restraining order. And we actually work with people to get therapy. We talk to them about how, if they get, you know, substance abuse therapy, or mental health sessions, or going to AA, whatever's causing their issues, helping them see that's a way to avoid getting a gun violence restraining order. So that has been at the core of what I'm doing day in and day out. And just, yeah, working, working further in public service and in public safety.
Doing anything, Raul, stick with you for a second, outside of work, in the community, civic-minded stuff, or volunteerism, or protesting in and of itself? Like what, or are you really just focused on the work?
I've been mostly focused on the work, because it's, it's just such a serious thing, and it takes a lot of diligence to get it done right. The other aspect, I mean, I'd say that I've, I have helped out with providing some meals for different homelessness groups, particularly, one time I pitched in and handmade my own meals for Tasha Williamson's group at the hotel there over by the sports arena. You know, just staying as active as possible. But fundamentally, my job is, it's, it's a stressful job and requires a lot of diligence. I've been focused on that.
Thank you. Noli, how about you? What have you been doing to be of service in the last?
Yeah. Well, me, even despite being, you know, obviously very stressed out about the survival of my restaurants, Dirty Birds, and obviously, we all know what small businesses and restaurants are going through. We always made time to serve the community. I always made time to serve the community. And through the business, you know, we're down, during the height of the pandemic, we're down about 85% of our business. But despite losing that money, I got together with my partners, and we put together a project called Lingia Ford. And we've donated meals, over 50,000 chicken wings and full meals, to 50 different hospitals, emergency rooms. We fed all the workers at the Shelter to Home Project, at the Convention Center, fire stations, police departments, because these are the people that take care of us. And despite us losing money, and it's, it's people over profits, and we've been dedicated to that, and I'm very proud of that. Another thing that I did was, I got involved with, one thing that this pandemic has really brought to light is the digital divide between families that can homeschool with home computers, and, and low-income families that don't have a home computer. And so, I got involved in an organization called Computers to Kids, where we gather computers, old computers from businesses and individuals, and refurbish them, clean out their hard drives, and load them up with programs, and either give them away to low-income families, or sell them for $80, which is an amazing deal. The other thing I've been doing is, I've been working with the Chinese-American organization, Chinese-American organizations that have raised tens of thousands of dollars for PPE equipment. This is, I'm so disappointed that the Chinese-American community has been so discriminated against during this time. And so, I wanted to work with them to, to gather PPE equipment that they've, that they've raised, and give, and go to local, locally-owned minority small businesses in Linda Vista, and, and give them that PPE equipment that a lot of them can afford, or they just don't have, to keep our residents safe. So I've been keeping busy and staying involved. It's something that's not new to me, and that's one thing you mentioned, you know, that when I see something wrong, and you, you know, I brought, I told the story about when the government shut down, I teamed up with a church in Tierra Santa to hand, to hand out gift baskets and to feed affected families during the government shutdown. This is a continuation of what I do as a man of action, to get involved in the community, and care for the people that take care of us, and people that are really being affected by this pandemic.
Let me ask you, stick with you, Noli. As a small business owner, how would you judge the city's efforts to help small businesses? Do you feel like the city did enough? And what would you have suggested doing if you were on the council at this time?
You know, I, the, the outdoor dining has been a lifeline for us, really been a game-changer for us as, as a restaurant owner. For us to have that limited capacity, or no capacity for indoor dining, it's allowed us to increase the amount of customers that we allow to dine in. This is a beautiful time. Summer in San Diego is a time when people want to dine outside. And, but unfortunately, three of our four restaurants don't have outdoor dining. So we've been able to add that to, and keep us alive, because to go and deliver is, this is not a sustainable method to survive during, during this pandemic. We just don't make the numbers, and almost all restaurants can't survive on that. So I'm very pleased with that outdoor dining, which, which has been great. You know, I understand the concerns that people have about indoor dining and the capacity. And we can do it slowly, and, and make sure that we do it, we open up slowly, and do it the right way, and keep our customers and our staff safe, which is of primary importance, more than profits, or, because we just don't want an outbreak happening in any of our restaurants or anywhere. And we're determined to make sure that we, we do that safely. So, and the grants that have been, that they've offered for PPE equipment that the counties offered, has been helpful. And, but, but the city's done, and for outdoor dining, and reducing the permit process has been extremely helpful for us.
Is there anything you would have done differently, faster, better?
I, I wish the city would have really worked with us small business owners, because it was very frustrating for us to watch big-box retail stores like Costco and, and Target, and supermarkets continue to be open, that sell non-essential goods, but continue to be open while us, while us small business owners that sold a lot of the same types of goods that those big-box retail stores sold, weren't allowed to open. I understand this is, you know, state-manded from the, from the government, governor down, but I wish, I wish the city would have stood up more for small businesses that we can operate under the same safety guidelines that, that big-box retail stores were allowed to operate under, because it was, it was definitely killer. I hate seeing small businesses and restaurants close every single week. Over 2,300 restaurants have closed in California since the pandemic, and the number's going to continue. It's going to be a bloodbath. Most restaurants only have about two to three months of reserves. And now there's talk about the governor moving our county into the. And, uh, now there's talk about the, the, uh, the governor moving our county into the, uh, the purple tier. Uh, which is going to close indoor dining, which is going to be very, very difficult for, uh, for restaurants and other small businesses.
Raoul, what do you think of the city's efforts to help small businesses? And what would your, uh, approach have been on the council?
I feel like it was, uh, slow and too small when they started the fund. I think, I think it only started at about $6 million. And it wasn't well publicized and they had issues with the technology and I, I'm saying to myself, you know, there's so many small businesses that really needed, uh, to get access to that. And I'm not sure it was equitably distributed. Uh, I, the other aspect of that is I wish we would have been more of a leader, uh, come, you know, uh, Memorial Day and throughout the summer to, to continue to encourage people to frequent restaurants, just like Nolli's. But not necessarily dine in. Uh, I think there's, I think they did a, a recent poll on people who've had COVID. And they were several times more likely to have eaten in at restaurants. Um, you know, that's a balance that has to be struck, but we can continue to support small business, but make sure the health issue is taken more seriously. Um, I feel like, uh, but ultimately this has been just a set of, it's been a lack of coordination between city, county, state, federal. It seems like every level of government has a bit of a different message. Uh, and it's hard for people to jump on board and to know what the right thing to do is in any particular jurisdiction. Um, and that makes it tough. I, I, you know, I wish that, um, I wish that there had been just more of a buy-in by people like Jim Desmond, who was, you know, saying, COVID isn't a big deal. And he said it was only a few people were pure COVID deaths. I wish there would have been more of a, hey, let's talk about what the ramifications of a supervisor saying that means, right? Um, I, I think that in the middle of a pandemic, in a once in a 100 year challenge is when everybody's got to be on the same step. And it unfortunately got hyper politicized. And, you know, there's lots of, lots of reasons that happened. But fundamentally, I wish the politics just would have stayed out.
In 2003, the Public Policy Institute of California put out a report that said, affordable housing programs focus more on process than on results because they don't have results. A dozen years later, Governor Jerry Brown said, any affordable housing program as the primary emphasis of trying to reduce the cost of housing isn't going to work. Cause the key is the private sector building more, uh, more shelter and getting out of the way of the private sector doing so. So to endorse a housing bond in 2020 is to endorse a program that has for decades, since section eight was passed by Congress in 1974, has done little to help enlarge, in, in places with high housing costs. They're like lottery season. Watch two or three percent of the people get lucky. So I just, I'm out of the loss why anyone would think that this policy that has four decades of failure is something that's going to have a broadly positive effect. I agree with Jerry Brown. Reaction?
I guess that's a question for you, Raoul.
Okay. Uh, you know, I, I'll just say that, uh, we got to work on all cylinders here. And if, if what you're saying is right, about two or three percent, that's two or three percent more people who are in homes. Okay? Uh, and I'm not disputing that we need to operate with more, uh, ADUs that, you know, manufactured housing, uh, you know, from, that they use in, in Japan and other countries. Let, let's do it. I, I'm not against any of those things, but we also want to provide people with choices of where they're going to want to live. And, and so I, I think that our government should be able to provide affordable housing through this bond. Uh, and in the grand scheme of things, uh, I, I don't know why we would say no to a part of the solution that is going to be helpful. Uh, and we can find other more helpful solutions as well. And frankly, of a $600,000 home, uh, an extra $115 over the course of a year is $10 more a month. Uh, I think that that's not unreasonable. And ultimately it's up to the voters to decide. Let the voters make their choice on it. I'll vote yes on it. And if the voters don't want it, they won't. We'll go with other solutions.
How, a quick follow-up on that, because you know, you, you say that the cost of the individual family will be, not a lot, although that's a lot for some families. Um, but how about this dollar figure, you know, 400,000, 500,000 for a unit? Like that, isn't there a cheaper way to do it? Why, why not try a cheaper way rather than supporting that measure?
Well, I, I, I actually said, let's try some of the alternatives like manufactured housing. I think that's good. Uh, but you know, where it, each aspect of it takes its own ramp up time. It takes, it takes time to get that going. And, uh, we, we want to provide subsidies as well to affordable housing developers. We want to provide, uh, you know, cutting the, the time it takes to get a permit at city hall. Uh, the number one loss of money is the amount of time you got to wait. When you have your financing ready to go for the permit to get approved. That'll save more money as well. So, uh, I, I'm just an all hands on deck type of guy. Uh, in, in solving homelessness because we're so far behind our arena goals. And we failed so miserably on providing workforce level housing as well. Um, it's, it, you know, ultimately the solution to all this problem is building the housing, but also creating the jobs that can afford it. Right? It's not only about needing the housing. People have to be able to have quality jobs. So, uh, it, it's a more complex problem than one bond will solve or that one report will say is, is slow to, to move.
But if you talk to legislative staffers in Sacramento, they say one reason why, uh, prefab housing hasn't taken off the way it has in Great Britain and Japan is because of the building trades unions. I, I just, you know, it, it, on building trades unions are, uh, do this, teachers unions, uh, play a role in things, the police unions play a role in things. Democrats are fundamentally allied with people who have a different conception of how to help California than what Democrats say they're doing. We need a democratic Gorbachev to come out and say, hey, these people are not helping progressive causes. If, if, if unions are behind the higher cost of housing, behind problems in public schools and behind problems in police discipline. You know, when, when does somebody stand up and say that? That's what Shirley Weber told us last year. Why aren't there more Shirley Webers among the Democratic Party?
So I, I just have to disagree with, uh, the premise of your question about, uh, unions being in the way of instituting reform. Uh, if we had listened to teachers for the past 40 years, and I was one of them for a few. Uh, we'd have smaller class sizes and more schools and look smaller class sizes, which would have helped us when we had a pandemic and we needed it to not be so cramped in class. If we would have listened to the police union 10 years ago, when they said, why are we starting to be the ones who are taking over homelessness and drug addiction issues? And instead funding hurt officers or putting the, put it on the county to have more, uh, uh, drug addiction therapy for people. Uh, we wouldn't be in this position either. So actually, in a lot of ways, the unions are the ones who raised the red flags a long time ago. And leaders didn't solve it. So, uh, you know, the building trades unions, uh, I appreciate their endorsement. But, you know, I'm not going to tell them, hey, I'm against manufactured housing. Uh, we need to solve the solution. Uh, we need to solve the problem. And so, uh, you know, no person who's endorsed me controls me. I will listen to everybody. I appreciate what they stand for and the fact that their jobs bring more money, uh, local hire to our areas. Uh, which increases our revenue bay, our tax revenue base. It increases a lot of good things. But, um, I think that the fundamental premise that unions are against reform is not true. And I gave you a few examples.
Thanks. Let's get back to, uh, the issues and, and some of, you know, your, uh, stuff in your background. On the pandemic, Nolli, I want to ask you, uh, this, and, and this question may take a while, so bear with me.
Yeah, please.
I, I think we all know someone who's, um, died or ha, been hospitalized, uh, by, um, the coronavirus and COVID-19. 200,000 Americans have died multiple times that have lifelong health issues. So I just want to read this quote to you that you, uh, said on, on video on April 29th and, and get you to respond to it.
Sure.
"The news networks love this because their ratings are double what they normally are. So do you think they want this crisis to go away? I'm sorry. This is just, I'm telling the truth. They love this because their ratings are going through the roof right now. They're double. Because that's all people are doing. We're sitting at home, watching the news. And so they want you to continue to be plugged into this crisis and make sure that this continues as long as possible. That means sensationalizing the story and what the situation going on right now. Even if there is good news coming out, it really doesn't necessarily, they spin it to make sure the crisis continues as long as possible." Now, as a journalist, as a human, I am, um, that hurts me. That hurts me. That hurts me physically. Why did you say that? What were you thinking? What did you mean?
Yeah. So I made a statement back in, um, first of all, thinking back, it was a very reckless, um, statement. Um, I, this was made back in April during the, the height of the shutdown. I was, um, I was watching the, the business that I helped grow and build, uh, for 12 years. And the 100 employees that we were, that we had a furlough, uh, lose their income. I was during, my, my, uh, my father has been in the hospital since, uh, February or was in the hospital since February. Um, because of a, um, congestive heart failure and kidney failure and not be able to visit him. And, uh, and more importantly, mine not being able to visit, uh, him, um, this entire year. I, I just lost him, uh, two weeks ago and, and not being able to say goodbye to him was, was one of the toughest things ever. But it was a very, very difficult time, um, when I, and I was having this conversation with June Cutter, another candidate, expressing the frustrations that I was, um, that I was feeling at the time, watching the national news. I was talking about CNN, Fox, MSNBC, the national news where they're, I saw their ratings. You know, it was just, I was getting so frustrated just sitting there not being able anything to do, uh, during, during this time. So what did I decide to do? I just, I decided not to just sit there and feel sorry for myself and be angry. But what did I decide to do? I decided to get involved and get involved with the organizations that I, I talked about with computers to kids. Taking care of the, the, the people that are helping us through this pandemic, you know, feeding, uh, all those different service agencies, hospitals, police officers and fire, and firefighters that are, that are working so hard for us, taking care of us. Working with the Chinese American organization and that have raised tens of thousands of dollars and handing out that PPE equipment. Um, it's, it was, it was something that, uh, affected, uh, that, uh, still affects us. It still affects, uh, me on how I think and how I, um, do business and how I, I choose to get involved in the community. It was a reckless, reckless, reckless statement. And, um, I apologize for it. But no way that it, I was talking about the local coverage of the story. But when you sit there, that's all we can do is watch the, the national news networks. And I was frustrated. And I, I made, um, a stupid reckless statement. And, but look at my actions, what I did immediately after that. Um, and not something I said at the, in the heat of passion. And I apologize to members of the media for that. Um, and it was something incredibly stupid for me to say. And if I could take it back and do it, uh, and, 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 because so many people, like you said, I'm not trying to minimize it. Almost 200,000 Americans that have, uh, passed away from this pandemic. But look at what I've tried to do during this, um, this pandemic. And please judge me on that. And not something that I said out of frustration and, um, what I was going through at that time.
I, I appreciate that answer. And I just want to say I'm sorry about your dad. I lost mine, um, last year and I think about it every day. So I, I appreciate where you're coming from. But I do want to ask a follow-up question about this. Do you believe the numbers that the media is reporting based on, you know, government data, John Hopkins University data? That, do you believe that it's 200,000 Americans dead and, um, many more infected?
I can, I can only go by what is right. I try to just, one thing I try to do, I don't just rely on one's, uh, media source. I try to do my own research, um, and I try to validate everything that I, because I, I want to, there's, there's so much information and misinformation that's out there. And I've seen it all on social media and the news and just everywhere, just different publications. I'm almost, you know, consumed by this. Just trying to get the, to flesh out the real numbers on what's going on. And, you know, if, if only six, whatever, 6% only had, uh, you know, coronavirus is without any pre-existing conditions, but the 94% had the, had the, um, pre-existing conditions that led to the death. Coronavirus was a, a contributing factor to their death. So, you know, they probably wouldn't have died if they didn't have coronavirus. So that's, that's the conclusion I've, I've, I've come up with. It has, you know, it, uh, it, um, it, if they didn't contact coronavirus, they probably would have passed away sooner than, than, uh, if they didn't. So that's what I can go on. And, um, that's what I believe.
Just another call. Where, where do you get your news from?
I do, I try to read, I try to read every single news article, uh, uh, you know, that I just, whether it's, honestly, I, I, you know, I was, I'm still, I, I try not to watch CNN, MSNBC and Fox News. The national is, first of all, I'm so consumed with what's going on locally because that's what I'm, the office that I'm running for. But, um, I try to read all the different publications, whether it be, uh, very left-leaning publications or right-leaning publications. Just everything from the, uh, from the Washington Post to the LA Times, to the Union Tribune, the Voice of San Diego. Um, so it's, I, I try to do my own research and come up to my, with my own conclusions. Based on what I, what I can find. Because if I see something that's on social media and it doesn't sound right, it sounds a little bit too, um, you know, right-leaning, I, I want to make sure it's fact-checked because I'm not, I don't want it to spin. You haven't seen anything on my social media or anything talking about minimizing the pandemic. I, I made that statement when I was in this, this, uh, this, this chat with, with June Cutter and other candidates. But I haven't, if you look at any of my social media, I, I've been taught minimize the coronavirus in any way. Um, I just talk about my work, what I've done to, through this crises. And that's, that's what, uh, that's what I want people to concentrate on, the work I've done during this pandemic and, and trying to help out where I can.
Thanks again. I just have a, a quick little follow-up question. If you could, I'd like both of you to answer, but if you could please keep your answer very, very short because we have a lot of other topics.
Absolutely.
What are your thoughts about, um, enforcement, lack of enforcement for people who are gathering without social distancing or wearing masks right now?
Raoul, why don't you go first?
Sure. I think that, uh, it's really important that if you are violating the county health code, uh, you need to be ticketed for it. It's an infraction. Um, you know, we've seen so many different things in our city not followed or, or, uh, you know, just, not people, people just not keeping up their end of the bargain. Scooters comes to mind. Uh, you know, if you're not enforcing the, the code, uh, people are going to abuse it. And so I think that with just a little bit of enforcement at the very beginning, people would have recognized, oh, our government is taking this serious and I can't be flagrant about it. Um, and that'd be my answer. Not, not a over policing of it, but just showing where we're taking it serious, uh, would have been helpful at the beginning when it really needed to be done.
Nolli?
Well, unfortunately, you know, uh, small business owners have actually had to take on the enforcement, uh, of masks. And that's led to really uncomfortable situations, sometimes violent situations, what happened at the 710 Beach Club, uh, a few, uh, over the, over the weekend. Where it's, it's frustrating where the government puts these mandates on us and they expect us small business owners and our staff having to enforce these, these rules and regulations. So, um, it is, we've turned into the enforcement mechanism instead of the government. And that's, that's been unfair to us because we just want to, we're in the hospitality business. We want to take care of our customers. Um, and not have to deal with enforcement. We will, um, because we want to keep our customers and our staff safe. But it's been very hard to do business in the city, like it already hasn't been, uh, easy to do business right now, uh, during this pandemic because of the loss of revenue. But this is something that we additionally have to take on. Um, and it's been frustrating. And if, if, if for, for public gatherings, you know, especially what's happening at San Diego State, that's frustrating. Because when we see numbers going down, uh, in recent weeks, uh, we see our numbers going, uh, going up again because of, uh, San Diego State and, and some of the young, uh, the young adults, uh, wanting to have a good time and gather and, and, and party. And, and that's led to a surge in, in cases on campus. So there has to be some way that the government can take it off us small business owners to, 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 uh, to, um, to stop, um, you know, to have to enforce these rules and regulations.
Raoul, let me ask you a specific question about, um, you brought up the gun violence restraining orders issue that you're intimately involved with now. Um, there have been, you know, um, comments made in the last few months based on some of the racial justice issues that, uh, African Americans and people of color are unfairly disproportionately, um, a part of that system. This is one example of a system maybe that is, you know, um, geared against, uh, uh, people of color, communities of color. Is that the case? How do you, do you protect against that? Give me your thoughts about that, that issue of racial justice and gun violence restraining orders.
Sure. So we're, we're a team of three people, uh, you know, a former DA who's now supervising deputy city attorney, a 20-year attorney and me. And uh realistically, I don't, I I would tell you and realistically swear to you that there is no uh discrimination or bias in the way we enforce GBRAs. That I actually wrote a memo on the demographics and the geographics of GBRAs. 70% of them are from north of the eight, 30% of them are from south of the eight. Uh, 91% are against men. Uh, and then I believe it's between 60 and 65% are against uh are are, actually, it's closer to 70% are on Caucasians. And then they are underrepresented of Latinos in our community. They are slightly more than our population of African-Americans. Part of that, I believe, has to do with uh when there is a case involving either domestic violence or gun uh or or reckless brandishing of a gun, if there's a suicide attempt, if there's a um, you know, a serious drug issue or if there's a person who's just completely bonkers, who like a guy in Ranch of Penasquidos who said Bill Gates was trying to put 5G uh trackers in our blood through the COVID vaccine, uh who was stocking, trying to stock up on shotgun shells. Uh, we look at the evidence, you know, we don't, we don't look at the person's race and we just, we dismiss a lot of the requests that come into our office. Um, I haven't done the demographics or geographics on those. But fundamentally, it's all about, is this person a threat to themselves or uh or others? Is it a substantial threat of gun violence? And can we meet that by burden of clear and convincing evidence? And there's 15 factors, uh eight are discretionary, seven are mandatory for the court to review. And uh it it's it's not anywhere like the uh was the SDSU study that showed that African-Americans were over 230% more likely to be pulled over. That's not anywhere near the case. Actually, I was listening to Corey Briggs talk about it on his interview with you from last week. And uh it's just absolutely not true at all.
Thank you for that uh explanation. Um, if you want to share that memo, I'd be curious to see it if you could email.
Uh, I'm not.
If that's public.
I it it was part of a request for more funding because the state legislator legislature gave us a $250,000 grant to fund our team last year uh because of how successful we had been doing. Uh, this year we asked for more money to expand our team and training because we trained over 400 law enforcement agencies in 2019. Uh, and so we were just asking for more money in that. Uh, I'll I'll run it up the poll, I'll see what Mara says.
Thanks, thanks, I appreciate that. Uh, before we go to some specific issues, I want to throw the mic to board members at this point to see if they have um some broader questions.
I'm curious if there's a particular policy or issue for each of you that, you know, we've seen some city council members have these sort of signature issues, whether it's the race and equity office or short-term vacation rentals. For each of you, and I think it's time for Noli to go first. Um, is there something that in your first year you would bring to the table that you're really passionate about or would want to be put with your name?
You know, I just uh just through my, you know, my 30 years involvement with the with the city, I just try to come up with innovative solutions, um things that, you know, I've tried to advance through the the boards that I've tried to do. You know, there's so much um conversations about, you know, uh housing and with the problems that come with housing. And one of the um problems with housing is the parking, the 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 amount of cars that go into neighborhoods. So I've been trying to advance something for the last four or five years. And um when I was on the parking advisory board, now on the mobility board, is the ability for people to park in front of their own driveways. And that will, um and that's legal in the Cal- and according to California Vehicle Code, it's it's actually legal in San Francisco. But I'd love to bring that um uh one, the one thing that I've been trying to advance for five years so far is is that because it has the potential to create tens of thousands of parking spaces around the city in impacted areas. And especially in areas where there's transitory development where parking requirements are being eliminated or reduced. So that that's one thing, but I, you know, I, other things that um that uh that I want to do is make sure that we have, you know, programs like, I'm going to adopt a program like, um, you know, if you heard adopted neighborhood or adopted highway, I'm going to do adopted neighborhood. People always complaining about the maintenance of weeds and brush in their neighborhoods. I want to have encourage businesses to to do uh for the city to take on adopted adopted neighborhood where a business uh takes uh takes on the responsibilities for maintaining certain blocks or certain neighborhoods for their maintenance. So it takes the responsibility away from uh from our government. So um, you know, things like that have been, we have a Tecolote Canyon cleanup. Um, and uh in in the Navajo communities, fire is definitely a danger along the canyons. And we need to clear that brush because that is a tinderbox way to uh to ignite. So um I think businesses would be all in for being able to advertise their business and willing to take on the responsibility of of maintenance. But, you know, I want to build a, since I'm on the Parks and Recreation Board for the city, I want to build more dog parks. Um, especially one in the in uh in, I'm working on one in uh off Lake Murray right now, working with the community leaders. Uh, Dorothy Leonard and Jay Wilson um and and Dick Murphy to to get this done and and an organization called Beyond Leashes. So that's something that uh I can go on on what I want to do for the city, but those are just some of my proposals.
That might be the first Dick Murphy reference in editorial board in a long time.
No.
Um, Raul, how how about you?
Yeah, so I I've, one of the things that I've I've been talking with a lot of folks about is what we can do with the San Diego River because it runs through District Seven all the way to the ocean and it starts up in in Julian. And so what I really want to see us do is connect all four of the paths along the river into one giant river line. Uh, the reason I call it that is because uh some, I spent some time living in New York and I'd go visit the High Line on the west side of Manhattan. And you realize it's a beautiful economic, cultural, public space that encourages art, commerce and tourism. And I thought that that was such an amazing revolutionary concept for the west side of Manhattan. Uh, and then uh one of my best friends from law school is the pro bono counsel for what's called in Miami, the Underline, and they're taking uh the main pipe that goes from outside of Miami down into Brickell. Uh, they're taking that whole bike path that goes miles and miles and miles and transforming it into a similar public space. I think we have to do the same thing with the San Diego River uh because we have the beaches, we have Balboa Park, but District Seven is about to have San Diego State West and at the end of that trail is the Dog Park. And so if we can connect all four of those, we're going to start to see people really trust walking along the river. Uh, one of the ways that we would fund it is through the San Diego River Conservancy. Uh, whether Noli or I win, the District Seven board member is from uh is on that board. Scott Sherman's been on it for the past eight years. We use water bond money. There's billions of dollars and the San Diego River Conservancy gets to use that. And we can use that to clean up the river so it's not so stinky. We got to actually, we have to aerate the water because it's not enough oxygenation in it. That'll kill some of the bacteria. It also increased the water quality and after storms, there'll be less floods and we won't have our beaches so dirty uh and close down for days. And if we connect those from San Diego State West to the Dog Park, we'd also have to make, we'd also be making sure there's less flooding in Fashion Valley or on the other side of Mission Valley. And people would have a place where, I I mean, imagine doing a long bike ride or taking your dog for a walk along any of the stops of the green line of the trolley there. And imagine being to go all the way to the mission and we can have a a history and cultural uh iconography or exhibits of the natives, uh Kumai Indians. Uh, if we, when we get all the way under PCH, imagine having murals for uh Black Lives Matter and the Chicano Movement and the Asian-American military uh service for uh presence from that like establish the immigrant history of San Diego and as long as, along with, you know, small amphitheaters. We can get labor, business, uh the, you know, the River Conservancy money and actually have an environmental, cultural, economic and and uh just feel-good, family-oriented program that's all of District Seven that we can really be proud of and and promote to the rest of the world. Um, you know, I'm I'm glad I have a friend, uh one of my very best friends who's working on it in Miami and is telling me sort of the pitfalls of it. Um, a lot of it is regulation, uh but, you know, imagine if we put that together and we'd have another gem that connects the football, new football stadium to the Dog Park. I think it would be amazing and uh, you know, imagine people using it right now if we had it in the middle of COVID. I think, you know, we're we're behind on it, let's get it done.
That kind of tees up a question for me. Uh, there's a vast open space area that's underutilized between Admiral Baker Field and Mission Trails Park. It's now filled with a lot of rusting equipment and an old quarry. And the neighborhood has been told for years, oh, something great like Savita is coming for this property and it's going to have exactly what you're talking about, parks and open spaces and commercial and maybe some housing which we desperately need, of course. The question is, when? When is this piece of property going to actually see something happen with it?
I, I know uh the plan that I gave right there, I know that it takes a long time to get the planning done, the funding in place, built and executed, right? That that, but, you know, you asked us what we want to bring in, that's sort of our revolutionary idea in the first year. It it takes 10 years to make a big project. Um, over there, uh, you know, I I am concerned about putting more housing over there. An open space, preservation of open space is something that I'm really behind. I'm, you know, one of the, even though uh, you know, Scott Sherman's of a different party, I have to give him a lot of credit for how well that he protected Mission Trails and wanted to expand it. That's a really big accomplishment. And that space, I'm not so sure we're ready to put housing there because Mission Gorge Road is one of the most impacted roads in all of San Diego. Allied Gardens, San Carlos, Del Cerro, anybody I talk to at their door or on their phone, uh at their door in the primary and now on the phone in the middle of COVID is saying, please, please put a hold on the development there because it just creates such a backup in in traffic. Uh, I don't know when that project's going to come about, but if we can do an open space, it's obviously a lot quicker to get done than more development, commercial and office space. Um, and then the last thing I'll point out is you make, you mentioned housing. The other good thing about uh my my Riverline plan is that they're about to build the Riverwalk Development with 4,400 homes and a new trolley stop on the golf course. It's going to be mixed use, that's going to be a model. Imagine having mixed use around that and as a new model for San Diego. Um, I want to see that area out there near Mission Gorge between Admiral Baker. Uh, you know, just preserved, uh open space would be better.
Noli, what do you think with that site?
Well, you know, I am committed to, you know, the, I serve on the Mission Trails System Advisory Council and obviously on the Parks and Recreation Board for the City of San Diego. And there's no one more committed to open space and developing us to make sure that we provide the housing, but also make sure that we have an open space and we don't turn into Los Angeles or San Francisco. But it it's it's has amazing potential. Uh, one thing that I've been a big advocate for where it does take a long time, but we have to expand on our private-public partnerships where, you know, we look at Savita and um that was a perfect example of Subberry, um, so various companies and the city working together to build the parks and to build the open space and do it the right way. Um, and it it rolls right that, you know, there is concerns about traffic and the density in that area and we don't want to um, it's 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 going to get worse when uh SDSU West gets developed. But uh let's let's start thinking, let's put together a plan that that makes sense and make sure there's connector roads and and to relieve some of the stress off of Friars, uh Friars Road. Um, so it's a, it's something that we need to undertake, but let's 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 work with the business community and and to to make this happen. Um, and because this is an an underutilized parcel of property.
Laura, I saw you had a question earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if each of you, again, keeping your answer as short as you can due to time. Um, what would you do outside of your district? Because you're going to end up with issues in front of you um that are outside of your district to vote on too. What would you do to enhance and make life better for Latinos in San Diego and all people of color?
Raul, why don't you go first?
Sure, so uh I I think that our city really has to uh consider municipal broadband as a way to connect everybody. We really should have, could have had that during COVID to make sure that families weren't struggling to have their kids studying remotely. And the number one growing business uh creator in all of the United States right now are Latinas via internet companies. And, you know, San Diego uh obviously has a robust uh Latino community. Uh, if we put that in place, we could create competition with the private internet service providers. We could save hundreds of thousands of dollars like uh cities in Louisiana have done where we're not spending tax dollars to buy our internet service providing uh provider, uh, you know, internet access is what I mean to say. Um, and we would close the digital gap, um, you know, uh, you know, Noli said that he's been working on getting laptops to people and that's because that's a big problem, that people don't have that access. The saddest thing I've seen uh in the last month was really how uh it was that Taco Bell worker who had her kids outside the Taco Bell doing their school uh while she was in work. And I'm thinking to myself, if they don't have internet access at home, they have to use the wifi at the restaurant. That's like, that's a shame. Um, it's an, it's an expensive investment immediately, but it can also transition to more remote working, working from home. Allow us to transition office buildings into into housing. Um, and so I think that that just opens a, you know, it's good for equity, it's good for economic prosperity. Um, and then the last thing I'd say is uh I really want to support uh all the different communities of immigrants uh in in City Heights and in Linda Vista and in Kearney Mesa, all across San Diego. Um, I support creating cultural centers for the Vietnamese American Association there. Uh, you know, Viet Vote is putting that on, we were interviewed for it the other day. Um, and uh I'm proud that my website is the only one in San Diego politics that has English, Spanish, Vietnamese and Tagalog full-blown translations so that there's access to that, I'm committed to it.
Noli?
Okay, sorry, so, you know, just look at my record of service to the the community. I I've been, you know, I I got my passion for serving the community, especially serving the Latino community and the Vietnamese community. When I started working at Bayside Community Center uh back in 1996 for four years uh defending the rights of uh uh documented immigrants and undocumented immigrants from being evicted from rundown apartment buildings. Um, so I continue that public service in my commitment to the Latino community and other immigrant uh communities in in San Diego. Um, one thing that we can help is, I I want to work, one thing that I came up with is also working with, you know, working with the universities uh to with the School of Business and the School of Real Estate. And I, and I've been working with USD on this, but working with those colleges to to work with minority-owned small businesses to work on their um operations, their marketing and get them up to the levels where they can compete for larger city contracts or larger con- private contracts. Um, that's something that we can do because those contracts, you don't have enough minority owned, minority-one uh contracts by owned by small businesses. So one thing we can do, it's not fair for these companies that have been established a a long time. Uh, they have a mentor system for their their kids or for their younger or their younger workers, but we need that mentorship with our minority-owned businesses um to make sure that they can compete with the larger companies. So that's something I'm very passionate about. Also, uh, when I got on the Park and Rec Board, one thing that didn't make sense to me, why that, why doesn't rec centers have wifi? Um, libraries have wifi, but rec centers don't. So it 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 was, um, the 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 uh the answer that was given was, well, because it's a liability because um if children are viewing um restricted content, it might fall on the city for liability purposes. I was like, well, they don't have that problem, uh, they have that same problem at the libraries, but they have wifi access. So it's frustrating to see that uh the digital divide that 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 exists right now and it's only getting wider uh with the with the homeschooling. So um those are just some ideas that I I want to continue to work with uh the with all communities of color. I spent a lot of time in District Four uh with Bay Pac and got in and working with them on different ideas on social justice. And that's why I've been endorsed by uh most of the leadership in the Black American Political Association of California, including Dr. Willie Blair, Ken Malbro, a former candidate, um, and Ellen Nash, who's also headed the organization because of my work with with the African-American community and my solutions uh to help some of the problems uh that exist in those communities.
Let's stick on the issue of racial inequities and talk about the planning groups and advisory boards which uh the city has. They skew largely white male homeowners. Um, Noli, you're obviously chair of the Linda Vista Planning Group. What uh, how would you use your experience to, should the city do more to change that? What would you do looking at that situation and
Yeah.
think it needs, uh, what do you think it needs?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, I I sit on the the Community Planners Committee, I sat on it for, what, three, four years? And you look in that room, it's mostly older, white, male um homeowners uh which are making advisory uh which which are advising the city on housing and land issues um and which are not representative of uh of the of the city. I I sit on the Linda Vista um uh planning group, obviously was chair uh for four years. And we do have a decent represented uh representation of minorities and renters and and women. And we do have a decent represented, representation of minorities and renters and, and women on the, on the, but it, it's, it's hard. I mean, we've, as much as we've tried to get out the word and to promote and personally invite other people that normally wouldn't sit on these community boards, it's very difficult. So there is a quandary that exists between trying to get these boards to be more representative of, of the communities that they, that they represent. But it's, it's, it's very, very difficult. But we always welcome it because we don't want, the only advice coming from older, white, male homeowners to the city. Because that minimizes the advice that, that the city, that the city's getting from our communities, which is valuable. I'm a strong advocate for community planning groups. But I don't want that advice and those advisory statements on projects minimized because it's not representing, it's not truly representative.
Is there anything, follow-up for you? Is there anything the city could do to incentivize? Or what would you do to incentivize or even to, you know, require greater diversity in those groups?
Require public service and require public community service. Yeah, it's, I, I would absolutely love that. It is, I'm, I, I'm trying, we, we try, we, we just, we sat in our planning groups at our meetings and like, how can we recruit new members? But it has to be personally inviting people to join the planning group. And it, it can't be from the city, city down approach. It really has to be those, those personal, because the only time, this is the problem. A lot of times people only join planning groups when it involves their, their particular neighborhood or their particular block. And then when it, when it, when it doesn't involve them or their personal interests, they'll step off, they're not, they're, you know, they're not going to get involved, you know. The best way to increase participation is, is invite controversy. Invite a controversial project in your neighborhood and that will turn them out. So if you have more, if there's more projects and more housing that's going to be built in these neighborhoods, I guarantee you will get more, will get more representation and more people wanting to be involved. But I'm not sure if it's the right type of involvement because usually the people that are turning out are, are not happy about any developments going on in their communities.
I like that idea of more housing. Raul, how would, how would you, do you see this as an issue? And what would you do to?
Hundred percent, hundred percent it's an issue. And the reason it's an issue is because the planning groups, a lot of them have been captured by developers who hold meetings. I, I mean, Mission Valley has theirs on the first Wednesday of the month from 12 to 1, in the middle of the workday. You know, that, how are you expecting anybody to show up to that type of meeting? So if we're capable of doing this by law, I would want to pass an ordinance that says a planning group has to be run on a weekend for most people to be able to show up. Part of it is that a lot of the developers who run and get on it, it's, first it's their business interest, so they want to be on it. And two, they show up to the four, three, four, five meetings in a row that makes you eligible. And then the voting capability is also restricted in a lot of these planning groups. It's not really a democratic group. And so that's why we don't have a representative population on them. And on top of, I mean, the, the last thing I'd say is, they hold it on workdays so that it's part of their workday because they're seeking out their business interests through that planning. So if we want to increase diversity on those, make it accessible to everybody at a time when most people can get there. Okay? That would be it. And then lower the bar for participation. Why, why would a person want to get involved if they say, I have to show up four or five months in a row before I even have a voice? I can walk up to this microphone and talk, but I can't sit on the panel? That's, that's not encouraging to anybody. So we actually have to restructure the nature of the democratic input on those. That, that's really my view on how you get more diversity on it. We, we can't require that people be part of it, but we can make it easier for them to do it. And then the last thing I'd say is this, I don't know a lot of city councilors who talk about the planning groups with voters at their door. I certainly have because people say, when is the, when are the lights going to go down in the north part of Allied Gardens? And you say, well, show up to the Navajo Planning Group, SCGNE has a presentation with the city and let's talk about the tree planning. They, they, there's, these meetings exist and people don't know about them. So, and that's because their leaders don't promote them. So we have to make sure we promote it as leaders more as well. It's really an education process and then we're going to get that diversity that we want.
Can I say something? Can I say something, Matt?
Please, go for it.
So Raul, why haven't you gotten involved in any community planning groups or any community groups since you, before you, before you followed your papers to run for office? You are a perfect representative, you're Latino, young, and it would have been nice for you to get involved in the community, get involved in community, community groups, learn the issues and because you're, practice what you preach, get involved in the community. But you didn't do that. So how can you tell people to join planning groups and join other community groups when you haven't done that? You moved into Mission Valley and, and followed your, your papers to run a few months afterwards. So that's, that's my question.
You know, Nolli, this is my hometown, it's not yours, so don't take ownership over it. I went to high school across the street from where you went to college, so don't pretend like I don't know the neighborhoods. Fundamentally, when I moved home, and maybe Nolli doesn't understand this, is that preparing for trials as a prosecutor requires you to stay late after night, you know? It's not an eight to five job. You have to be diligent and make sure you take it very seriously. And so in my free time, you know, putting, you know, making sure that I got guilty convictions on DUI drivers and making sure that vandalizers in Linda Vista were being convicted for, actually, it was a person who was, he was a provider for a Vietnamese business owner who sold only EBT and, and, you know, food stamps, food through his business. He was getting harassed by his provider. And so, you know, convicting people like that is why I wasn't involved in the planning groups. Also, it wasn't well promoted, I didn't know too much about them. But also, in my free time, I was helping people like Nathan Fletcher get elected to the county board of supervisors and trying to help, you know, people win their races in those first few months. Because I know that being an elected official, you have a lot of capability to do that. So, you know, we, we chose different paths, Nolli. I appreciate it if you didn't put mine down.
Let's get into some issues really quickly in the interest of time. The Police Practices Commission, do you support the creation of that? Just a simple yes or no? Yes from Raul?
Absolutely.
Nolli?
Yes.
The thirty, easing the 30-foot height limit over the sports arena site? Yes from Raul?
I agree with that.
Yeah, okay. And so a broader question about the sports arena site. What do you think about the proposal as it's, as Faulkner is, is, is shaping it now? You know, you're going to come to the council, basically you're a, you're a, it's a, it's a blowout win in the, you know, in, 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 in a basketball game and you're up, you're, you're up 40 and you're coming in with your bench knees to get some garbage time and approve this project? Or is that not how to look at it? You tell me. Is this, how do you, how do you feel about Faulkner kind of moving ahead on this and coming in? Are you guys going to be a rubber stamp for this project or what do you think? And, and Nolli, why don't you go first?
Well, we don't rush anything. We, we've learned the lessons of 101 Ash Street, not to rush into projects, make sure that we do our due diligence. You know, I, that's one of the reasons why I think I'd be a better city councilman because of my experience in dealing with land use issues, not both in, working on community service groups or community groups, but also in the private sector and acquiring lands, negotiating contracts. And we, everything looks, everything looks good at prospectus. One thing I've learned in the business world, everything looks good on paper. I've been presented with a lot of business prospectuses and they all look good. But when it all comes down, when things go bad, we're all pointing fingers in what's, like what's happening at Ash Street. So we can't rush this, this project through, but I'm supportive of this project. But the one thing I'm concerned about is that, that place is a mess when it comes to traffic right now. And if we don't think of some solutions and how to get in and out of that area and how to connect the trolley station in Old Town with that sports arena, then it's, it's just not going to be a well-thought-out project. So I'm also looking at other solutions like Ron Roberts' solution of the idea of the gondola is connecting the, which is a lower, a lower, a lower price than a, than, than a trolley. But there might be an idea to connect the, the trolley station with it, the sports arena. And I worked with Ernie Hahn for, for, for a couple of years on trying to find a new site for the sports arena. I arranged a meeting with the SDSU West people, with Jack McGory and Fred Pierce, with the AE, the AEG people and Ernie Hahn and his father, trying to see if we can get the sports arena built on the SDSU West side or make it part of the plan. Unfortunately, the SDSU West people didn't like that idea because they thought it might compete with the Viejas Arena. But bringing professional sports, that's another thing I want to do. I want to bring my friend David Fizdale, who's an unemployed NBA coach, and bring an NBA team to, to San Diego. That's why I work with Ernie on this thing and I still want to work with Ernie on, who's a good friend of mine, to bring a, some professional franchises back to San Diego and give us some city pride.
Tough season for the Knicks. Raul, how, how would you approach this, how would you approach this project?
With heavy, heavy scrutiny. I, I really think that the appropriate thing to do would be to pause on Mayor Faulkner pausing and taking care of 101 Ash full-time. And I'll say, what I bring different to this scenario and which I don't think any other potential city councillor has had in a long, long time is my experience in white-collar corporate investigations. You know, when I was a civil litigator, I was part of my old firm's team that would go and investigate multinational companies, review their contracts, review their policies and procedures, review their personnel and do extensive interviews. You know, the type of job where you're reading 25,000 emails a week to understand what went wrong on something and what could go wrong. And, you know, I'm going to be the type of person who doesn't miss that there is no independent outside appraisal or, or a walkthrough. Or the idea that, you know, it's asbestos, it's not going to be an asbestos problem unless you change the configuration and break it apart. And they're saying all along that, oh, this is not going to meet our needs exactly, we're going to have to move some things around. That's not going to get past me. No one's had that experience. You know, Nolli has a different aspect of, of, of understanding land use deals and I have a history of investigating them for energy companies, automobile companies, pharmaceutical companies, you know, in my old job. So I think I'm very unique and attuned to those problems very, very carefully. And on this, I do want to see it succeed. I do want to see another sports team in San Diego, that's for sure. I like how one of the proposals for the Big Five moves was to, over the main hub that they're going to build, is to build sort of a Madison Square Garden-style design with, where you can put a, a big arena. You know, we can have two, there's no reason not to, but, you know, there's a lot of options. And this mayor has not shown the attention to detail or the proper picking of personnel to get it done in the way that it should have. You know, these things are hard. I respect that they are difficult, but some things are just obvious. So that's what, that's my opinion on that.
We've heard a lot of candidates over the years come in and say that they would do their due diligence, but with 101 Ash, with the street surveillance issue, you know, the list could go on. There are examples of council greenlighting deals without doing their due diligence. So just in 20 or 30 seconds, and really because we're running out of time, make, make the case, persuade us that you would do the due diligence. And, and Nolli, why don't you go first?
Yeah, since I'm running out of time. You know, I, I've done it in my, in my, what, 25 years of, of running a business. You know, one thing that, what my experience with, my family leased our property to the Lilac Hills Development in North County. And when I negotiated with that developer, I made sure that we were protected because things would go wrong with that deal. And they did go down, they did go wrong because the, the project was declined, was declined by this board of supervisors and voted down. And agreements and all the things that they agreed to, to, to maintain all fell through. But I made sure that we, my, I negotiated that we were protected and we had security of the adjoining land, that we would have that as security just in case they didn't fulfill their obligations. So that's one thing, I'm always looking, you have to be, exercise foresight because everything looks good when you're negotiating and everything, but you have to look five years, 10 years in the future. You know, when I, when we acquire Dirty Birds businesses, the person you do, I knock, I, I ask to break through the walls and look at the pipe and look at the foundations and make sure, because everything looks good, especially at football houses. I tell my friends if they're going to buy houses, ask, they'll pay to fix the plaster or the, the drywall, but take a look behind the walls and do, and make sure that you're, you're, what, what appears to be is the same when you're looking behind the walls and what the pretty, with the pretty image of what the house is when you're looking at it. So things like that is so invaluable and I have that experience.
And Raul, I won't hold you to 20 or 30 seconds, but.
I'll give you the 30.
Yeah.
So it's, it's one thing to have, you know, it's one thing to have a personal deal and it's another thing to have a multi-billion dollar deal that you're investigating for eight to 10 months or even a year at a time. That's just a, a unique experience. And I would, I would just point out that the, one of the biggest proponents of the transparency and the accountability that you're talking about, Matt, has been put forth by Monica Montgomery, a seasoned attorney, who, you know, understands the responsibility of good lawyering. And I'm going to bring that right alongside her as well. And then the very last thing I would say is, you know, I'll leave it at that, that was 30 seconds.
Thank you. And my, my last question, and then I'll open it up to the board for any last ones from them. Climate change, you know, remains an existential issue. The Climate Action Plan is a legally enforceable document that requires us to get to 100% renewables, but there are, you know, multiple paths to that goal. Would you reopen, review the Climate Action Plan? Do you think that, you know, what specifically in there do you think needs to be examined and potentially change in terms of benchmarks? And Raul, why don't you go first?
Sure. You know, things, things are on a faster track for a climate disaster than we were even expecting. Fires this past month are an example of that. So that means that our plans have to be reevaluated with new science and, and made even stronger and more robust. The one thing that's good that we've met several of our portions in the Climate Action Plan so far, things like tree cover, you know, we're, we're on track to meet it by 2030. Things like reducing cities' use, we're well past the, the, the goal for city use in city offices of electricity. But, you know, why haven't we, why are we so far behind on transferring our fleet over to zero emission vehicles? Why are we so fine, so far behind on mode share? You know, I think that we just have to acknowledge the fact that those are a liability, that the city is going to get sued on down the road and face even more litigation costs if we don't meet them. And if there was going to be a very specific aspect of one of those goals that I'd want to relook at, I would say the fact that we, we achieved, well, let's go with two, tree, the fact that we have canopy cover met at this point or so far on track, we need to up that and say, hey, is there a better way and more, you know, water-reducing and climate-friendly way so that we don't encourage fires to get more canopy cover, to reduce the temperature of roads and the property and, and things like that, increase the amount of oxygen put back in the air. Carbon capture is a really important goal. We should, and that transitioned to my second point, we need to actually come up with new carbon capture mechanisms. I think that the Rewild Project in Mission Bay is a, it's a blue ecological system that actually captures carbon better. And we have to say, where along our beaches can we encourage more marsh, more plant growth so that it cleans the water while capturing carbon? I think that we're specific, purposefully, or rather environmentally well-placed to do that with rivers. And you heard about my plan to, to clean up the San Diego River, but also along the beaches as too. Carbon capture has to be part of our, a specific aspect of the Climate Action Plan.
Nolli?
We just, you know, with these, with this heat wave that's illustrated to us is that, you know, we want, we want to move towards renewable energy, but we want to be responsible stewards of that because it's, it's an embarrassment that we have rolling blackouts in, in the 21st century. In 2020, we're starting rolling blackouts and we got to make sure that we, all renewable energy sources, which we all want, but are they dependable? Do we have to, we have to make sure that if they're not, if it's not windy or if it's not sunny, that we still have a dependable energy source to power our homes and empower our businesses. So I want to make sure that we, we have a dependable energy source going forward. I also, and if that takes, if that, and that's going to tire some, you know, we have to reexamine possibly using. Also, and if that takes, if that, and that's going to try some, you know, we have to reexamine possibly using nuclear, which is, which is clean. But, and we have to evaluate if it's, if it's safe going forward in the future for, as an energy source. I also just worry about the impact that if, if the move towards renewable, renewable energy sources on, on, on a timeline, how it's going to affect working families and people that have a hard time paying 20, 30, 40, $50 more in energy costs? Because the families in La Jolla that can afford the solar panels on the top of their house, they're getting subsidized and they're getting spring electricity because they're generating their own energy sources. But the families in Linda Vista or City Heights are paying for, are paying higher, higher energy costs because of our move toward renewable energy. So I'm all for going towards renewable energy sources, but let's not forget about the cost it's going to have on working families and low-income families.
And I had a quick question, real quick for, for both of you, probably can address it in as short a question, answer as possible. Couple of issues that are getting kicked around. One is rent control. And the other is the concept of splitting single-family residences into multi-residential units. And I wonder if either of those sounds like a good solution for the housing and/or the homeless problems we're having.
Nolli, will you go first?
Single-family homes, splitting up that, I don't, I don't support that. Especially in, in, in single-family areas, especially in the Navajo communities. But, you know, in Linda Vista, where, where we need more affordable housing, that could be an option. It's certain, District 7 is so diverse. And I wouldn't say it's a one-size-fits-all solution, but it's, you can't have a one-size-fits-all. But for single-family homes, splitting up the lots in those neighborhoods, in Tier Santa and the Navajo communities, I wouldn't be for that. What was the other, what was the other issue?
Rent, rent control.
Rent control, absolutely against rent control. I think that's going to stifle development and the production of housing. That's going to lead to more blights in neighborhoods because homeowners or, you know, people that own rentals are not, are going to be disincentivized from, from upgrading and renovating their existing units if they're going to be capped on the amount of money they can be charged.
Rooh?
Sure. So on splitting the single-family, single-family residence so that you can have two families living in one lot? You know, another, you know, diversity of aspect that I bring is that San Diego is not the only city I've really ever lived in. I've lived in numerous different cities and see how other places work. And, you know, living in Boston where you see a duplex, it works. Families live there peacefully and are able to afford their rent in places like Somerville and Medford and Lynn, just a few minutes away from Boston with good public transit, right? So I don't see the problem with giving homeowners the choice of creating a duplex on their piece of property. It's, if, if we need more housing, as I said earlier, this is both a pro-property owner and pro-housing mechanism, right? Let's, let's give it a chance and see what happens because it's worked in other places. And rent control, our state passed essentially a rent control measure to make sure that, you know, old, older, more than 15-year-old properties can't have their rents raised at a certain rate. Let's give that a few years to see if it works before we, you know, jump onto a new rent control measure. You know, we'll see if that actually did stifle housing like a developer said it would. And if it did stifle it, then we're going to find a different avenue. But right now, let's, let's not, let's put a pause on that. Let's see what the old legislation actually bears out in the economics of it.
Thank you. Any other last questions? Okay, why don't you guys go to your closing statements? And Rooh, why don't you go first?
Sure. First of all, Nolli, I'm very sad to hear about your dad. I know when we saw each other in March, you told me he wasn't doing too good. And I know he was a great guy. And I know he was proud of you. He named you after him. And he's a great doctor, pioneer. You have a lot to be proud of with your family. And I'm really sorry about that.
Thank you, Rooh.
So, you know, a lot of the people I talk to on the phone right now in the middle of COVID, the first question they ask is, why are you running? And I, from the very beginning of this race, I've talked about my brother, who passed away from an opioid overdose six years ago now, and how that connected to my public service and why I wanted to be a prosecutor here in the city. So that when people with drug addiction issues and homelessness issues, you know, he lived out of his car for a few months when he was really struggling. Understanding how to help them and that we, this isn't a moral failing of theirs, but there's a human aspect to these problems. And that reverberates across every community in District 7. And I, I feel like people understand my why is based, not always in just experience or education or knowledge, but the people that I listen to and the people I care about. And I bring the next generation onto the city council. If I'm elected, I'll be the youngest person. You know, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think we need a little fresh blood. And we've had a lot of leaders from both parties, whether it was Brian Manchin and Chris Kait or Todd Gloria and David Alvarez, who were young when they did this because they had that why. They had that story about what they cared about in their community, solve the problems each neighborhood. And I think about him every day. And I see people like him in my job. And you can't fix it one case at a time. You fix it by laws. And so that's why I'm running for city council. Because I think of, what am I doing? How am I being my brother's keeper? How am I being my sister's keeper? I think of one particular case where I had one young black woman who was caught on her seventh petty theft from Target. And her public defender just walked in and threw the hands up with the change of plea form and said, we're ready to plead guilty. And I said, no, that's not, you're not even negotiating? I stopped, I hit pause, I went back, I reviewed BWC from prior cases where she, under her breath muttered, I have a heroin addiction because I, and this is why I steal stuff. And so I put together a policy with the mental health deputy city attorney and, and got her on a program of six-month therapy. So she could have the case dismissed. We dismissed her other petty thefts as well, because no one should be suffering in this way. In fact, she actually even relapsed with meth about five months in, but we didn't throw her in the slammer. We said, okay, that relapse is part of it. Let's give her an extra three months to get it under control. And sure enough, you got her, she got her case dismissed. That's the way I walk in the world. That's the way I understand people suffering in San Diego. And even though we have affluent neighborhoods like Del Cerro, their people are suffering in the same way as they are all over San Diego. That's the why of, of why I'm running. And I'm bringing that new generation of thinking to the city council that I think we desperately need. This is my hometown, and I'm going to represent it faithfully and diligently. And we'll bring all my skills together to make sure that every single person in San Diego, no matter where they live, is served well because they are my brother and they are my sister. And I really appreciate everyone on the board for listening to me. And I really would be honored to have your endorsement in the general election. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rooh. And just a quick question. How old are you? Since you brought it up.
I'm 32. I'm about to turn 33 in about two weeks.
Happy birthday. Nolli, how about your closing statement, please?
Yeah. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to seek this really, really important endorsement that I absolutely cherish in the primary. And once again, I want to really deeply apologize for my really irresponsible, stupid statement when I made in frustration back in, in March. And it really hurts me, Matt, when you say that it really hurts you to the core. And it's no one, everybody that knows me that knows that I don't want, I don't like hurting people's feelings and offend anybody. Once again, I apologize for that. I believe the same reasons that you endorsed me in the primary election, including the importance of a, of having a small business on, on, a small business owner on city council is even more important now during this, during this pandemic. The city is going to be really faced with a really dire outlook regards to city finances. And it's, I'm not looking forward to it, especially when it comes to public comment, because we're going to have to be slashing programs. And, and gosh, I'm not looking forward to that. And, and hope, maybe, maybe not having to, people put people out of work that work for the city. And I'm just not looking forward to that. But we need someone that is a small business owner and that can represent that. Because we're, what this pandemic has shown is that small business owners are the people that create the jobs in, in this region and have been so affected by this shutdown, where unemployment went all the way up to I believe 30% in, in, in the county. I think now it's like about 12, 12 point or 14.2% or something. It's still extremely high. And so just the importance of someone that's building a locally grown business during a tough time. We opened in 2008 and we survived during that time. This isn't the first quarantine I've, I've, I've lived through. Back in 2003, my family, we, I managed my family's guava orchard. And it was a fruit fly pandemic that completely shut down our, our operations there. And so we survived that. We went through tough times. And so I know how to survive these tough times and be a good store, be a really good store of our city finances. Because we've done that for, for our business and we've been able to survive. We're actually expanding to another location during this time in La Jolla. We're opening up in a few weeks on the campus of UCSD where we'll be able to employ another 20 employees. So it's so, so important that people are going to be looking for that and be representative. Because one thing you said was that a balance of interests in city governance makes for good governance. And I think that still holds true. We're going to have a democratic mayor and a supermajority on the city council. And it's important that you have a diversity of voices. And I, and I bring that. But also someone that also stuck up for communities, that's been working in the community for so, so long, serving on over 20 different boards, commissions and organizations, loving this city. I wasn't working on political campaigns. I was working for the city, working on building skate parks, working on building our skate park in Linda Vista, making sure Skate World wasn't taken over by, by a developer. Coming up with new programs to benefit, benefit underserved communities on the YMCA board, so passionate about that. And that's why we need, we need less political leaders and more, less, less partisanship and more independent leaders in San Diego. And I've shown that. And that's why the endorsements I've received, I've received the endorsement of two former Democratic opponents in my race, Monty McIntyre and Sharon Marios. How many times does that happen where opponents on the other side of the aisle have endorsed the person from the other side of the aisle? Because they truly believe in me and know what, what I'm about. And I've been endorsed by, like I said, civil rights leader Willie, Dr. Willie Blair, National Electrical Contractors Association, which is mostly made up of unions, union membership. So, and I would love your endorsement because I truly am committed to the city and our communities. And so thank you for the opportunity.
SISIC or Lechon Kowali?
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
SISIC or Lechon Kowali? What's your choice?
Best Filipino dish.
Oh. So I appreciate, I'm more of a, I've been cutting down on Filipino food. I've been trying to stay slim during this time. Filipino food is very greasy. And so I, it's hard to stay slim during this time. So I had to give up on Filipino food for now, until after the election.
Thanks to you both. I really appreciate, really appreciate your time today.
Okay, thank you.